Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our November 2nd, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first order of business is please stand and join me for the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I move the agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to County Ditch Five acceptance hearing for the contracted work for the system. We will hear from Ryan Henniker to read the jurisdictional documents for the hearing. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I have a quick memo to go through and then some hearing notices. The purpose of today's acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance also starts a three-year warranty period for tile work, one-year warranty period for open ditch work. Today, we are asking the drainage authority to accept the findings in order, approving the engineer's acceptance report. Notices for this hearing were mailed out to landowners on October 20th and also published in the Free Press the same day.
Thank you, Ryan. At this time, we will hear from our appointed engineer, Mr. Chuck Brandle, to discuss the acceptance report for the drainage authority.
All right, good morning. Chuck Brandle with ISG. Again, as Ryan said, the purpose of the hearing is to close out the contract, but if there are any issues that landowners have, we need to make sure we have addressed those. I have not heard any personally, but that's the real reason, is to make sure we've got all of those issues covered before we file out the contract. So CD5, we did a cleaning of a majority of the open ditch. It's a fairly large watershed. There's a handout with a map of the areas shown that were cleaned throughout the watershed, and I won't go through those. The timeline, the bids were posted in January of 2020, opened in February of 2020. Project was awarded to Groundworks Backhoe Service in February of 2020. We had a pre-construction meeting. Tree removal started in April of 2020. Most of the work was done last year. There were a few punch list items and some seeding and closeout for this year, and now we're, we've got everything buttoned up according to our inspection. Here are a few pictures of the project, using the long reach to clean the open ditch. We had a box culvert under a township road that was replaced, some riprap seeding and blanket, another culvert that was replaced within the system, cleaning up some shallower open ditch, portions of the open ditch. We put in alternative side inlets in some areas. We repaired tile outlets. We did move and reconstruct a weir that controls a wetland area, has both some private landowners' land and DNR land. So the weir was moved, which encompassed more land behind it. The weir had failed. It was approximately 20 years old, so that was replaced. There was an ASB build completed of the entire project that is part of the closeout packet. It shows the legal grade of the ditch, the areas that were cleaned, areas where trees were removed, where sloughs were repaired. There were a minor amount of damages. Most of the work stayed within the buffer or was done in non-crop during non-crop times. So this damage report has been submitted. The construction cost estimate was just over $1 million. Got very competitive bids. The original contract was just over $740,000. We had a couple minor change orders for some benching, some deeper areas, some berm construction and some additional side inlets, a few items that overran, tile outlets, some seeding and riprap. We have a total cost of $775,051.67. The contractor's been paid $727,742.52 and is owed $47,309.15. They have signed the final pay request. We do have all the documentation to close out the project, and we recommend closing out the project unless there is some information from landowners that we're not aware of.
All right, thank you, Chuck, for that report. At this time, I'll open up the public comment portion of the meeting for those individuals wishing to make a comment about the viewers. Oops, wrong port, sorry. Thank you, Chuck, for the report. Now, at this time, I'll open up the hearing to anyone public comment that would like to speak on the County Ditch Five repairs. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if you're on the phone, please star six to get in. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch Five? Come to the podium, please.
Yeah, my name is Jackson. I'm one of the property owners where they took the weir down.
Okay, Jeff.
Okay, Wendy, originally put it in, they kept telling me that it was supposed to be the same height of the DNR. Well, I went out there after you put it in, we had a heavy rain, I went out and measured the water level, going over the weir down about four inches above, and I went out and measured the DNR dike, and it was about this much sticking out of the water. So that tells me your weir is about this much lower than the original DNR. So I don't know, then I went out and took pictures of the water going through the channel, and our attention was when they put the weir in, we were supposed to burst that water out into the slough to give it a chance to filter out, but it was standing right in the channel and over the weir. So it wasn't even getting out in the slough, because I could walk up in the slough, you know, with my feet and never got into the water. So that was kind of the purpose when they put that in, part of it on my land was to get that water out in the slough to filter it, then if we had heavier rains, that'd be a holding place for the water, but just really not getting a chance to get out in the slough and all that stuff, so.
Okay.
It did kind of hold more water back, you know, in the slough before it was draining it more, but I don't know what Chuck's got to...
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, Jack, do you have anything else then, or do you want to?
Well, that was my main concern.
Okay.
Because I was told that the original weir that they put in was going to be the same height of the DNR one, you know, but I went out and measured with the water, and the water's a good tail, the height, you know, it was about this much lower than the DNR one, so.
Okay.
And then it wasn't really getting the water out in the slough where we were intentionally to filter it. Then I took samples, you know, where it went through the, there's a township road, I took a sample there, and I took a sample on the other side of the weir, and it was the same color, so it wasn't, to me, it wasn't doing the job I thought it was going to do, so.
Okay. I'm gonna just go and get through the public hearing part, and then we'll have Chuck respond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else wishing to comment on County Ditch Five repairs?
My name's John Shanahan.
Morning, John.
And I'm with Supervisors for SWCD, I'm also on Javerba Board. I, a question for Mr. Brandle is, how many side alternative outlets did you install in that?
I'll look it up. I can't remember the number of. I'll play it, but I have it.
I know they were supplied on a grant for a portion of, to Javerba, so I would like to know how many.
Yeah, I can look that up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, John. Anyone else wishing to comment on CD5 repairs? All right, Chuck, I'm gonna give you a chance to respond. You probably don't have time to look up the inlets, but...
I might, though. First off, I'll, I'll respond to the weir question, and this has been a little bit, this has been brought to our attention prior to the meeting. Just making this picture bigger. So the weir elevation is set to the same elevation that was planned originally on the DNR, the old weir. The other weir, it was a metal weir, and it, it actually heaved in some spots, and then water went around it. And I don't have a good picture of it, but it's back here. So in, there was an improvement back in 2002 or '03. And the weir was set further back. At that time, culverts were used for control. We checked in on those culverts, checked the elevation, and this weir is within tenth of a foot of what it, what it was planned back in 2003. We did actually set it higher than the weir from 2003, and it settled a couple, a couple tenths. So we purposely set it a little bit higher because we had that elevation, and it actually settled to the correct elevation. We've surveyed it three or four times to double check, because it's been brought up. And I do have a, some documentation that I shared with Craig and Ryan on that survey and that information on the weir. The side inlets, I have a pay request right here. Oh, maybe. Or I can answer that question afterward, too. Give me one second.
So the elevation of the weir, Jay, is where it is supposed to be?
Correct.
It's, and that is all we can do by law, correct? We can't raise or lower without...
It was a grant agreement made with the Department of Natural Resources. He's the funding, so yes.
I'm getting there. Having technical difficulties here for a second, but... So side inlets. One, three...
Can you make a comment about this?
Seven.
Sure.
So what Chuck is probably going to give information for is the total ASIs that was part of the project. Working with Jake from SWCD, we only funded a certain number of those ASIs, so to answer his question, Chuck might not have that information, because he's going to have all of what we installed.
Chuck won't know which ones are paid for by the grant.
Right, but I could get that information, because that's the document that was executed between Jake and I and was finalized.
Can we follow up with that?
Correct.
I think I have 11 in the pay request, but...
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was probably close to a dozen, but I don't know. Right.
All right, you guys finish that up amongst staff. All right, well, thank you, Chuck, for that clarification on the weir. It is at the elevation it was at before, Jack, so unfortunately, it's not working the way that it was working before, but that is what we have to do at the ditch authority, so. Anyone else wishing to comment for last call on County Ditch Five repairs? See, no public comment, no more public comment. I'll bring it back to the county board. This, or any, at this time, is there any questions from the board? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve the final pay.
I would make that motion.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to pay the final pay on County Ditch Five. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. We're done with that one. Move on to County Ditch 75 redetermination of benefits hearings. We have Craig Osserson here, he's going to read the jurisdictional documents for the...
Okay. Well, jurisdictions, I'll start with a memo, actually, here. The County Ditch 75 redetermination of benefits hearing, this is what we're here. The purpose is of a hearing on a redetermination of benefits of a drainage system is to determine if the appointed viewers have properly completed their reports in accordance with the requirements of 103E. When a drainage authority accepts a viewer, accepts a viewer's report, it will order the new benefits list to replace the previous benefits lists, pay damages, and establish easements as shown in the report. An informational meeting was held for landowners regarding this redetermination of benefits on October 18th, 2021. Today, we are asking the drainage authority to accept the findings and order approving the viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits on Blue Earth County Ditch 75. As far as the jurisdictional documents, there was a hearing notice that was mailed to the landowners on October 8th, 2021. The hearing notice was published for three consecutive weeks in the Mankato Free Press. Notice was posted at the Blue Earth County Courthouse. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
All right, thank you, Craig. We now have Dan Ruby to discuss the viewer's report with the drainage authority. Good morning, Dan.
Hello.
Morning.
We have the informational on October 18th. This is the final hearing, November the 2nd, 2021. Here's the appointed viewers. My name is Dan Ruby. I graduated from MSU. I was a farmer, and I'm currently a wetland banker. Bill Anderson, Lance Roberts, and Ron Ringquist, who is a certified appraiser, he has 35 years of experience in drainage and engineering. This report covers the redetermination for a previously constructed drainage system. It is a comparison of the conditions prior to artificial drainage with those that should exist with the drainage system in a reasonable state of repair. The viewing process is a mass appraisal process that values a universe of properties as of a given date using a standard methodology, employing common data, and allowing for statistical testing. Here are the aids to viewing. USD Soil Survey, GIS Photo and Data, Minnesota LiDAR, digital elevation models, yield averages and production costs from colleges, state data from the Blue Earth County Advisor, Assessor's Office, and visual inspection of each 40-acre tract. Here's a summary of CD75. It was established in 1928. There was an improvement in 1963. It has a watershed of 837 acres. There's no open ditch, no, no buffer will be purchased. Maintenance has been done, and it provides outlets for Blue Earth County Pleasant Mound 24, 5, and 36, and Shelby 19, 30, and 31. It outlets into CD89. Here's an image of the watershed. Here is, it's kind of a longer-looking watershed, 75 is. Just a little history of drainage. This is how it started. They'd hook up upwards of 30 bulls to a, what was called a swamp angel. It was a steel blade that was pulled through the waterways to help the water drain faster. During the CCC years, they built for anticipated needs with men's shovels. And here's how it is today. They go out and they pattern tile. Farming then and now. In the 1800s, we farmed with bulls. Early 1900s, we were binding, binding hay like this. The original system was designed, drainage was designed for hay and pasture. It was not designed for rotational corn and soybean rotation. This is how they used to plant corn, a four-row. Here's a picture of a modern planter. This is how they used to harvest. This is how they harvest today. Historical pictures that we, we often look at. Here's, we go back as far as 1938, and we look at how it was, how it is. This is what a watershed looks like on our GIS unit. Here's an example of soils, contours, and the DEM. The DEM allows us to, with just a glance, we can tell what the high land is, what the low land is. We can, when you add the contours and the soils, and you have that all on your screen, you can evaluate the As, Bs, Cs, and Ds very efficiently. Benefits, if you want, you can read, read this, but the benefits and damages are basically, if there's a benefit, the landowner, parcel owner pays into the system. If there's a damage, he receives funds from the system. Benefits classification based on conditions before drainage. The A, open water and cattail. B, seasonally flooded hay and pasture. C, needs drainage. The D typically does not need drainage. And B represents trees, conservation, wetland areas, and native converted areas. The O is usually for other roads. Okay, additional benefited, benefit classes. The A- represents drained, non-productive, pastures, rim projects, and wetland restorations. The D- represents commercial facilities like livestock or storage. Valuation prior to drainage, the As, standing water and cattails, market value of zero, economic productivity of zero. The B, seasonally flooded pasture ground, market value of 1,000 to 2,000 with an economic productivity of 100. The C is wet subsoil, marginal cropland, market val, market value of 4,500 to 6,000, economic productivity of 637.50. The Uplands, market value 6,000 to 7,000 with economic productivity of $712.50. And after the system was put into place, there's a potential value with NRCS guideline drainage. The As, they're now referred to as drained, slough areas, medium class, ponded agricultural ground, the market value is 6,000 to 7,000 with economic productivity of $690. So on the As, you went from zero to upwards of $7,000 worth of value. On the Bs, the well-drained ground, the high class, market value 7,000 to 8,000 with economic productivity of 720. The Cs, well-drained ground, best class, market value 8 to 9, economic productivity of 750. The D, well-drained ground, highland class with improved farmability, 8 to 9,000, again at $750. One of our tables we use is, this is a two-year representation of the production income. If you do two years, the adjusted income is $750. For the expenses, the two-year rotation of corn and soybean, the adjusted expense is So for the benefit class, value classifications, the benefit values that we use was, for As was $5,140, Bs $3,990, the Cs was $1,880, and the Ds was $620. This just, this, this slide just shows that when you take the annual benefit value from the Bs and you put it, you capitalize it over 25 years at a three and a half percent rate, that's how we come up with our benefit value, rounded to 39.30 for the Bs. Efficiency, the net benefit is reduced when actual conditions do not meet NRCS hydrologic efficiency standards. This is an example of 89, but it says the tile systems do not meet the NRCS standards. So on 75, the efficiencies were, for As was 60, the Bs was 75, the Cs was 85, and the Ds was 95. The proximity, in the middle of the report, there's a column called for proximity rate, and the proximity is used to adjust benefits to allow owners not directly on the system a reduction for the cost of tile or connection to the system. This is done by distance and joint cost for connection. In this example, this is like, let's, this is 15, so this is the ditch coming through here. The person in this parcel, this quarter-quarter, would have 100% proximity. As you go further and further away, and it, and the farmer will rely on his own resources to get his water to the ditch, for every 40 that he's away, we reduce it by approximately 15%. So that it, so there's money left on the table for the farmer to do what he needs to do to get his water to the system. Here's an example, she, a slide about roads. We measure all the roads, and the computer calculates what the benefits are. Okay, this is, this is the data that we had, this slide is the data that we had for, at the, that was submitted. There was a few, a few small changes. In the final, there was seven As, 100 point, 100.5 Bs, 325.5 Cs, 404 Ds, there was 22,580 feet of tile. The benefit of acres was 837. There's no ditch, no buffer. And are there any questions?
Any questions from the board at this time? Thank you, Dan. Good report. Now, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Those individuals wishing to make comment about the viewer's report for County Ditch 75, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to about three minutes, and anyone calling in, star six on your phone, and we'll hear your testimony.
Good morning. I'm Gloria Mack from Shelby Township. We got a preliminary, a report of what the redetermination of benefits would do for a Shelby Township. And when I looked through it, it didn't make sense. Sorry, Craig. And so I went to the meeting on the 18th, and I talked to Craig, and I talked to Dan Ruby, and he went back, and he checked things and made some adjustments. And so I don't have a problem with the adjustments. I just wanted to make sure that you were going to be adopting the redetermination of redetermination of benefits for 75.
Thank you, Gloria, and I would imagine if you made some adjustments, then would all be in this report, correct, Dan? Thank you, Gloria, for that comment, though. Nice to see you were able to work through it. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on County Ditch 75 redetermination of benefits? Last time, if anyone wishing to comment. At this time, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board for action. Is there any questions from the board before we move on? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the redetermination of benefits.
So... Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. All right, thank you. We will move on to the next item on our agenda for County Ditch 89. We are here to discuss the recommendations for the redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 89. We'll hear from Craig Osserson with the jurisdictional documents first.
Okay. Start with the memo here. The subject, of course, is County Ditch 89 redetermination of benefits hearing and approval of the repair bridge is going to be technically a separate hearing. I just wanted to make sure that's understood right up front, so it's two hearings back-to-back on County Ditch 89. There are two parts to today's County Ditch 89 hearing. The first part will be the hearing on the redetermination of benefits. The second part will be the hearing regarding repairs to County Ditch 89. Approval of the new benefits listing is required before we can legally order the needed repair. For clarity, we will treat the two redetermination of benefits and repair reports as separate hearings. The purpose of hearing on a redetermination of benefits of a drainage system is to determine if the appointed viewers have properly completed their reports in accordance with the requirements of 103E. When a drainage authority accepts a viewer's report, it will order the new benefits list... When a drainage authority accepts a viewer's report, it will order the new benefits list, replace the previous benefits list, pay damages, and establish easements as shown in the report. An informational meeting was held for landowners on October 18th, 2021. Today, we are asking the drainage authority to accept the findings and order appointing viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits on Blue Earth County Ditch 89. After the, when that's done, of course, after the engineers' reports on repairs, we'll be asking the drainage authority to approve the prepared proceeding. I, you know, transition right into the repair hearing then. Hearing notice was mailed to landowners on October 8th, 2021. The hearing notice was published for three consecutive weeks in the Mankato Free Press. Notice was posted at the Blue Earth County Courthouse, and that's it for jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Craig. At this time, we will hear from the appointed viewer, Dan Ruby, to discuss the viewer's report with the drainage authority. Good morning again, Dan.
Good morning. This will be a summary, okay? Same dates, same viewers. CD 89 was established in 1963. Lateral 1 was established in 65. It is a watershed of 89, 878 acres, open ditch. There will be buffer purchase. The maintenance needs to be done. Redetermination ordered in 2018. Ditches that outlet into CD 18 are JD 47, JD 116, CD 75, JD 24, and Fairville County, CD 23, and two other private ditch systems. Provides outlet for Blue Earth County Pleasant Mound 13, 23, and 24, and Shelby County 18, 19, and 30. It outlay, it outlets into a natural meander. I think we'll, everything in the report is virtually the same as before. Okay? There were a couple of changes, okay? No, the changes were in 75. Okay, here's the outlet benefit value for six, one, ditch 116 was 17,000. The outlet benefit for Blue Earth County ditch 75 was 7,500. The outlet benefit for Blue Earth judicial ditch 24 was 95,000. Outlet benefits, because they contribute to the need for the ditch, it's based on acres and the needed capacity. The net benefits was $1,282,984. There were 57 Bs, 493 and a half Cs, the Ds was 327. There were 7,010 feet of tile, and there will be 5.78 acres of buffer. Are there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Dan. You summarized that one. Thank you. We, have any questions from the board for Dan at this point? If not, at this time, I will open it up. For anyone wishing to comment on the report for County Ditch 89, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to approximately three minutes, and if you're calling in on the phone, please star six, and we'll hear your testimony. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 89 redetermination of benefits? And last time, anyone wishing to comment on redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 89? Okay, at this point, I will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board. Any questions from the county board? I would entertain a motion to accept the findings and orders for the recommendation of benefits for County Ditch 89.
Will do.
Got a first and a second? Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 89. All right. Thank you very much, Dan, for those reports. Appreciate all your hard work. And the viewers, extend our thank you to them for their work. It's a job we need to get done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll shift gears a little bit now. I'll let Chuck just get a minute here to get him set up and plugged in. At this time, we are going to move into a repair hearing to talk about some repairs. And Chuck will, Chuck, you ready?
Yep.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the 89 repair hearing. We will have Craig Osserson give us our documents for jurisdictions.
This is, this is for repair, actually replacement of a bridge. The hearing notice was mailed to landowners on October 8th, 2021. Hearing notice.
Hold on. We'll give everybody a chance to move around here.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Jurisdictional documents and notices for drainage for the repair hearing for County Ditch 89. Hearing notices were mailed to landowners on October 8th, 2021. The hearing notice was published for three consecutive weeks in the Mankato Free Press. Notice was posted at the Blue Earth County Courthouse. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
All right. Thank you, Craig. At this time, we'll hear from the appointed engineer, Mr. Chuck Brandl, to discuss the report for the drainage authority.
All right. Thank you. Again, Chuck Brandl with ISG. I have Kyle Werning with me.
Morning, Kyle.
Introduce you to Kyle. He's been with us 17 months full-time?
Year and a half.
Year and a half. So, did the work on this, and will give most of the presentation. They'll just kind of go through the existing conditions, what we're proposing, and the project cost. We did have two landowner meetings on this situation, and we are going with what landowners recommended two landowner meetings ago. The last landowner meeting we had, we only had one person show up, so, but we did get feedback from the landowners.
Thank you, Gloria.
Yep. So, go ahead, Kyle.
So, talking a little bit about the existing conditions. CD 89 primarily drains land from Nashville, Winnebago City Townships in Fairville County, and Shelby and Pleasant Mound Townships in Blue Earth County. The total drainage at the crossing that we were looking at drains approximately 8,100 total acres with CD soils, and predominantly the land is in agricultural row crop productions. So here's a look at the overall watersheds that drained at CD 89. As the viewer's report indicated, that we have land from both Martin, Fairville, and then Blue Earth County draining. And as stated before, the actual land that drains to the crossing, which is right here, is approximately 8,100 total acres.
If I could just mention, without doing the redetermination of benefits, there wouldn't have been enough benefits to construct this bridge, and without having outlet fees assessed to the other ditch systems, since CD 89 is just under 900 acres, but there's 8,000 that drain through this bridge. So that's why the bridge needs to be as large as we're proposing.
So, looking at the existing conditions, ISG was originally approached back in 2018 to put together preliminary drainage plan, and that involved a site visit to see that it was a 25-foot wooden span bridge that was originally constructed in 1963. Right now, it provides access to 25 acres of land that would originate, that would be blocked by parcel boundaries and the open ditch itself. In that 2008, or 2018 site visit, we did see that there were starting to be eroded channels, so that was causing an already restriction, and that's why we investigated. But if we go to the current day pictures, this was a site visit in August of this year, the bridge has since collapsed into the open ditch, rendering the land not accessible to the current landowner. And it's also constricting the flow within the open ditch and backing up water, causing potential flooding. So we looked at the existing capacities, and we will look at drainage coefficients. That's how we determine drainage in agriculture. And that's preferably for crossings within open ditches. We like one inch per day, so it can drain one inch of water a day. The original bridge had a 5.44 drainage coefficient, so well above the one-inch standard. We also looked at the open ditch itself, had 8.79, so has sufficient capacity. And then we also looked upstream, when we started basing our design elements at the 507th Avenue, those are dual box culverts, and those have a 4.9 drainage coefficient. So as we stated, we had a landowner meeting back in August to go over a few different options. One of them was constructing a new concrete span bridge, a 16 by 8 culvert, and then also establishing a permanent access easement, which is this TO line right here. From that, as Chuck mentioned, feedback from the landowners stated that they wanted to go with a viable option, which was the culvert. So we put together a-
Just back, back up one second. See the hatched area in green? That land is inaccessible without the bridge. It does not have access to a public road.
How big is that, Chuck?
It's approximately 25 acres.
Okay.
And then there's another little piece on the north side right there that also does not have access. So there's two parcels that need the bridge for access. Otherwise, we were trying to eliminate it with an easement. Landowners did not want to give up the land for the easement. So thus, we're obligated to replace the bridge.
I appreciate you looking at other options, though.
Yeah.
So this was the option we put together was a 16 by 8 foot culvert. We'll get into it later, but this is the most viable option to remain with the same capacity as much as possible. So going into more to the proposed design, like I said before, we put together a 16 by 8 foot box culvert option. We also did still show the permanent easement option. We put together a model to compare the existing bridge to the proposed culvert, to compare how much flooding would be affected from going from a wooden bridge, which has a lot of capacity, to a culvert. We want to make sure we weren't causing any potential flooding. And this closely matches, as much as we could, to the original constructed bridge. And this is what the head water elevation, so at the two-year, you have no difference in flooding elevations. And going forward, you do have some restriction capacity just because you're replacing a bridge with a box culvert, but it still remains a 5.43 drainage coefficient, which is very similar to the 5.44 of the existing wooden bridge. So just showing once again the proposed watershed, we would just be replacing the crossing right here. Turn it over to Chuck.
I'll skip over some construction practices, just showing you some pictures of other culverts that have been put in. This is similar to what the construction will look like. There'll be riprap on the end of the culvert. We put together costs. Unfortunately, at this time, concrete has gone up significantly in price, and I think the board is well aware of that. And box culverts are not easy to get. If we put in an order today, we maybe would be constructing this late next summer, or next fall, just on the information that I've gathered from other construction projects just because of the availability of materials. So the 16 by 8 box culvert project would be 234,000. That is similar to the cost of building a bridge. I am hoping that some construction, concrete costs go down, but again, we have a bridge that's collapsed, it's backing up flow. This is the most efficient way to replace that crossing. The easement costs were about 126,000. Again, landowners did not want to do that. We did offer that, that's, that option. They wanted to replace the bridge, which it was part of the system, so the, in our opinion, the repair is necessary to provide access and to replace a vital part of the ditch system. So the cost would be estimated at 234,000. We looked at what MinDOT had for culverts. There aren't a lot of 16 by 8 culverts bid out there, so it's a, we did add 10% to our estimate, so. So we do recommend moving forward with the repair.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. At this time, I will open it up, and Kyle, thank you. I will open it up for comments. Those individuals wishing to comment on County Ditch 89 repair, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under three minutes. And if you're calling in on the phone, please star six, and we'll hear your testimony. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 89 repairs? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 89 repairs? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action. Any questions or comments from the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the repair request for County Ditch 89.
I would make that motion if I have a question as well.
Okay. Do I have a second? Got a second for discussion? Go ahead, Kevin.
Where are we with the collapsed bridge? Is that causing any problems for potential?
Well, I have a contractor that likes to hang out and would do work in that area, so I would have to contact-
Come to the podium there. Right. Can you come to the podium, please?
I have a contractor that does work in that area. I don't know where he's at with the schedules at this point.
But that's something we can look at sooner versus later?
Right. And we're moving the debris, sure. Yes, for sure. Yep.
Other questions at this point?
I do. I went to a conference, and they talked about fast cast bridges. And they are made by a premier steel services, and I was wondering if, if something like that, and I don't know if we've looked into that, or if we have the ability here in Minnesota to, or in this part, to do something like that. Is that a, and are possibility looking, because it's one of those things that you can get into, and it might cost more for the steel and the stuff, but they do it in one day. So your labor would be weighed out.
One suggestion I have, and we just talked real briefly, is that we could give a bid alternate for a cast-in-place culvert and, versus precast. Historically, precast has been significantly less expensive. But right now, we're in a little different time from a material standpoint. So we could give that as an option or a bid alternate, and look at, and see if that could be done faster. We could put this project out for bid immediately. The plans are, are completed, and just see what timeframe we would get, if there's somebody available to look at that, so. But it could be available-
I'm not saying that's the right or wrong thing, but I, I want to make sure we, we use all our options. And if, if it's something that we have a part, partial land that these people can't get to until, you know, we get this bridge built, and, and we're going to build the bridge one way or the other, it'd be, I guess it's a, to me, it's like, we, we need to do this.
Literally, when I sat down, that was what I asked him about, you know, pouring in and place the footings and doing it traditionally and just using a precast top. I know what you're referring to. It's kind of a, it's similar to what the word is stressing, but it's, it's not as prefabricated, I guess is the term I'd use.
Okay.
Yeah, you could-
You're the experts.
No, no, no.
Yeah, you could approve, approve this, and we could have a bid alternate for that, and see if we could get it done quicker and less expensive for that option, for sure.
Yep.
All right. All right. Other questions or comments? I suppose we should amend the motion to let them add a bid alternate, or is, just by bidding it, are we okay?
Certainly wouldn't hurt to change the motion.
Because the motion is to approve it for the culvert, so maybe, Kevin, would you amend your motion to allow them to have a bid alternate? And Vance, be a second.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so we have a small amendment to that, so that we have some more options for us to review later, and we'll have to approve this after it gets bid out anyway, so. Other comments or questions for any of the staff?
I guess I just, I want to thank everybody involved in this. My first call on this came at 9:15 on May 27th. This has been a, a project or process, or worried about the, the collapsed bridge and things like that. It took a lot, I think, a certain amount of meetings and, and conversations and things like that. Want to thank everyone involved, whether it be on our staff at the county, but others as well, and landowners, to get, finally get to this date, so appreciate that.
Good comments, Kevin. All right, I got a motion and a second for the repairs on County Ditch 89. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time. That was a busy morning.
Thank you.
Lot of things going on. We'll give the staff just a minute to clear out, and then we're going to hear from Kelly Thank you, Dan, for those reports. Appreciate it. I thought you were going to say you got it on January third. You can certainly join us up here, Kelly, if you'd like, if you're more comfortable there, wherever you feel comfortable.
Good morning. Maybe they're in my paint, right?
You'll be fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning and thank you for your time. My name is Kelly Othel. I'm the Taxation and Record Supervisor for Property and Environmental Resources. Back in two thousand twelve, the county board delegated a Department General Administrative Responsibilities in the tax forfeiture process that allowed for a multi-year and process-heavy procedure to be more efficiently completed. As part of the delegation, the county board asked for some updates, so that's why I'm here. I'm going to first start a little bit with tax forfeiture, some general information, and then I'm going to go into information regarding the sale that occurred last week that we had on Thursday. So a couple of things to know, Blue Earth County acts as agent for the state of Minnesota in this process, so the property actually forfeits to the state of Minnesota. The ultimate goal of tax forfeiture is to collect unpaid property taxes. If we're not able to do that, we try and return the properties back to the tax roll through the process, and sometimes it does get conveyed to government agencies, jurisdictions through that process. I broke down the process in your memo into five different steps. There's lots of little steps that go into each of those larger steps. But a common goal of all of that is just to increase communication between us and the property owners, because we ultimately try to keep it there before we go through that tax forfeiture process. So the first step is the determination of delinquent taxes. That happens the year after taxes are levied. So in the first year, if you don't make your May fifteenth, October fifteenth, November fifteenth due date, we just call them late. They don't actually become delinquent until January second of the following year. So we go through a process on January second to determine those taxes as delinquent. It's mostly in our office, but it ends in May through a court process. So we have to publish it, we have to post it, we have to notify these taxpayers of what's going on with their taxes. The second Monday in May, it goes through a court process to be considered a judgment on that property. That brings us to the next step, which is the biggest step, which is the redemption period. In years prior, it used to be three to five years of a redemption period, depending on your classification of your property. But back in two thousand eighteen, it was a three-year process. So now it's three years after it's determined delinquent that it goes into, right, that it goes into the period. Through that period, we really work with the taxpayers, but it's the taxpayers typically coming to us. We do send out notices every December that lets everyone know that they have delinquent taxes, just so that it's not a surprise to anybody. But following that, those three years, we then start the expiration of redemption period. The expiration of redemption period is a large period of communication. We really work with the taxpayers to try and collect unpaid taxes. It does have to be paid in inverse order. So if you have two thousand fourteen taxes, you have to pay all your taxes back. So I went way far back, but two thousand twenty-one, twenty, all the way working back to your two thousand fourteen taxes in order to be done. We do have a fancy word that's called the confession of judgment. The confession of judgment can be set up that will stop it from the forfeiture process and allow those taxpayers to not go through the forfeiture process and have a payment plan to pay those back taxes. So a lot of that goes through that expiration of redemption period, and then we do start serving people, posting the property, doing that to make sure that everybody knows. Once that process is complete, everyone should know what's going on in the property, but the property officially forfeits to the state of Minnesota. There's a deed that's recorded in our, in the recorder's office that forfeits the property to the state of Minnesota. Our next sale, excuse me, our next step is to prepare for the sale. So we start preparing for the sale. We'll work through evictions, work with those property owners to get their personal belongings, that type of thing out there. The properties are posted. A lot of information goes into preparing for that sale, getting the properties ready, and then also setting the terms that are set for the sale and working through all of that. Once we have prepared for the sale, we notify adjacent landowners of the property. Anyone who signed up in our office to get more information about it, we've also notified them of that. And then the last step is the actual tax forfeiture sale. So the tax forfeiture sale, I was the auctioneer, and I'm not auctioneer, so it was very slow-paced, but it went pretty fine. So we had the sale actually here on October twenty-eighth. We had it in this room. We started with sixteen different properties on your list. There was one property that was sold prior to the tax sale, the day before, and they paid the previous year's basic sales price for it. So they wanted to get it before it went to auction. So we had fifteen that we auctioned off, eight of those properties sold. So that was good. And then we also had one person who came the day exactly after the sale to buy it. They just didn't want to purchase the property at an auction. So if properties do not sell at the public sale, they become available for sale at our counter. So anybody can come and buy those properties at our basic sales price. So we currently have six properties that are available for sale, two buildings over in Property and Environmental Resources. Those are, we have two residential lots, two small sliver residential pieces, and two rural lots with improvements. We currently have six total at our counter for sale. Also highlighted in your memo was six additional properties. We have six additional properties that we are currently working on step four for. So we're starting to prepare those properties for sale. Sorry. Those ones are some sliver pieces again, a house, a piece that has a shed on it, two vacant lands, and two sliver pieces. So from here, those six properties will be available for sale that didn't sell over the counter. If they don't sell, we will sell them, we will sell them at the next public auction. We also have the other six properties that we're working on preparing for sale that will be included in our next sale. We had a sale in the fall this year, but we are hopeful to have a sale in the spring. We have a lot of year-end projects or fall projects that we're working through, so we're going to try and bump that up and hopefully have a sale next March, April, May, somewhere in there. So that is, oh, as part of the delegation, it was asked for us to give an update every couple of years, let me know if you want us to come more often or less often. We can definitely do that, too. So that was the general presentation that I had, so I can answer any questions if you like.
Thank you, Kelly. A lot of information.
It was.
I appreciate your comment. There's five steps here, but there's way more work that goes into it than that.
Yes.
We all know that.
Yes.
Because it is complicated tax law.
Well, and it really shows that, you know, the benefit of the doubt is to the previous owner. I mean, we, it's four years before something comes up for sale, you know? So it's not like the county or the state's coming in and just grabbing it from somebody that, you know? Before it's even delinquent, it's a full year, and then it's another three years. So I think that's, you know, there's a perception in the public that these things are just, you know, done right away, whereas we give the benefit of the doubt to the previous owner and really give them huge chances to get their property.
Yeah, we definitely try and work with them. The confession of judgment, if you're one-year delinquent, you could set up that payment plan, the confession of judgment. So we definitely try and work with them as much as we can.
Great information, though. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I just had a quick, Kelly, yeah, most of this is state tax law, right? Or is it pretty much?
Yes, most of this is by state statute that we follow. So we have what's called a red book from the Department of Revenue that we follow.
That's nice that they forfeit it to the state, but we do all the work to get them on.
So I know how, I want to-
I beat you to it.
That's how it is. It trickles downhill, you know?
Could you forfeit the dam to the state?
We'll put that up for sale. Who wants it?
That would be a lot, a lot of extra steps that I would have to figure out. It might be worth it.
Not for her.
So, yeah, and you gave Kevin and I a little glimpse of your auctioning stuff last week when we talked at our meeting. So that information was very helpful to me, even being on the board for nineteen years. It's still a complicated process getting through the whole work, so I'm glad to hear the auction went well.
Mr. Chair, I wonder, Kelly, if you want to give the board an update on the farmland, because that was an unusual situation. Were we able to sell that?
Yes. So I don't have the parcel number offhand, but we did have a piece of farmland that an owner owned, and he had been notified quite a few times, but it did sell to the person who had previously been renting the land. So it did sell for a hundred-and-fifty-six-six, if my memory serves.
One-fifty-six-six, it says on your report.
Yeah, there was only one bid on that property, so it did sell.
And how many acres was that?
Twenty-point-zero-one-nine, twenty roughly.
So around five thousand dollars an acre?
So that was all the, that was the appraised value, and I think we talked just briefly about this the other day, that that was the appraised value of the property. Do we know what the back taxes were?
I don't have that number off the map.
Would it have been higher or lower, and then?
It probably would have been lower.
Lower. And then so that difference, that's what we talked about the other day, the difference was, that goes to the taxing jurisdictions then.
Yes.
Even if there's a profit in it.
Yep. If profit is collected on that, it gets prorated back to the different jurisdictions, so the township, school district, and the county based on a proration.
Would make more money on that, which is interesting. I just, I don't know why you would let the property go. Don't understand that, but things happen.
Yeah.
Other questions for Kelly? You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good day. All right, we will move on to Ryan. Thank you, Michael, for coming. We've got a big Public Works road tour this afternoon, but he's going to give us a few highlights and-
Yeah, just give you a few updates, and I'll try to keep it relatively brief. A lot of this we'll hit on again, but no action items today. I will be back at your next meeting with a brief action item for some equipment procurement. So with that, we'll get into it real quickly. Project updates, County State Highway twenty-seven reconstruction from fourteen to two. All work has been substantially completed. Turned out really nice. We're going to take a look at it here this afternoon, twenty-seven in Eagle Lake. All work there has also been substantially completed, except for the final wearing course. That'll be put on in two thousand and twenty-two as part of the contract. The road was open last Friday, October twenty-ninth, Victory Drive from Stadium to Hoffman. The signal pole delivery continues to get pushed back right now, scheduled for November ninth. Installation will begin immediately. There may be a few-day gap between installation and programming of the cabinet, so we're hoping to have it operational by about November twelfth. Again, it's operating well, given the three-way stop is functioning until more traffic starts using the road again. County State Highway one from nine to ninety, crews are scheduled to pave the far south end of the project next week. Soil nail walls are underway. That'll be something we may have to get out and walk to if we want to see that, but it's a very interesting process, and there's various stages of it taking place along the project. They're going to work until-
That part of the tour today?
Yep. They're going to work until conditions don't allow, so probably pushing up to Thanksgiving or so, and then resume right away again in spring of two thousand and twenty-two. And storm sewer construction is also taking place through the shoot. There's a lot of work going on. It's kind of a war zone right now, but that's progress in our eyes, so that's the good news. And all of the construction is because of some of the material inavailability that we've faced with that project, like every other project, will push up until frees up. So they're trying to get every piece of pipe in the ground that they can as it's delivered to the project, and soil nail walls and other things constructed as much as possible this year to minimize impacts next year. The seven bridge, work is complete. Paving is scheduled for later this week, so the road should be open by the end of the following week after the striping, guard rail, turf, and those types of things are completed. County State Highway forty, one fifty-one to one sixty-nine, we're finalizing bidding documents for those projects. We would anticipate putting them out for bid probably right after New Year's. We generally don't like to bid projects in that gap from Thanksgiving to New Year's. Bidders are usually vacationing or wrapping up work and things of that nature. Seven in Mapleton, final plans are expected this week for a submittal to MinDOT. We anticipate, again, bidding that one in early winter. We'll also be driving through County State Highway ten and seventy-two in Vernon Center. The city's consultant engineer, S.E.H., is working on the detailed design of ten and seventy-two because our streets are part of a much larger overall city project. So they're going to be taking the lead on project design and delivery. And there is a public meeting scheduled for November ninth by S.E.H., the city engineer, presenting the feasibility report to the city council.
November eighth.
I'm sorry, does S.E. Monday?
Yep, Monday.
Yep, okay, I'm sorry.
Do we, do we know if we got a chance, will we be a chance to look at plans or some landowners before that hearing?
I did talk with the city's consultant engineer, and schedule-wise, we don't think we're going to get something before that. But the good news is there's a lot of time after it. This is, this is just the feasibility report that's required by state statute to say that the project is feasible, and it's economical, and it's necessary, et cetera. So that's a step along the way. So we did talk about getting something on the calendar. He was going to talk to the city council. I think Diane was out this week, so he was going to have a hard time getting anything lined up with the city this week. So I did speak with him to get something on the books.
But that's not, that's not a hard, November eighth is not a-
Correct.
Deadline to make changes to that.
Correct, yep. That's just really the overall project that it's feasible and that it should be pursued.
Thank you.
Yep. And that was, yeah, that was my other comment. Another landowner meeting will be scheduled following that meeting to review the proposed design. Eleven from twenty to Minnesota Highway sixty-eight, design's at about ninety percent. Jack is starting to meet with people for right-of-way acquisitions, so that's always a good sign. The right-of-way will be a critical path for that project, as it is on so many projects. Six and a half miles of road requires a lot of landowner meetings. So there's quite a bit of work that Jack has in front of him, but we're going to get him some help, too, with some other staff. Twelve from twenty-six to twenty-six east to Casaw two, plans are at about sixty percent. Review comments were sent to Bolton to make. Now they're moving on to ninety percent plans. We've also been coordinating with the airport with different requirements associated with the FAA, and then also utility relocations, because those do have potential impacts. So one, for instance, was the overhead power lines. If they move five feet closer to the airport, could be an issue with the vertical clearances for the flight zones. BenCo, from our preliminary discussions, is looking at going underground where necessary, so solves that problem. So there's a lot of coordination that goes into just moving power poles and fiber optic cables and things of that nature. Sixteen is also picking back up now that staff availability is opening up and less work required for construction support. For maintenance activities, Sellers Construction is beginning replacement of a deteriorated and failing eight-inch tile on County State Highway thirty-two. It's just north of County Road one twenty-eight, so this is a piece of tile that had failed a couple of years ago. We had to tear the road open and do a patch, so we're replacing and moving it out from underneath the road to the west edge of the right-of-way, adjacent to the wildlife management area. The crews have also removed the previous church parking area and have restored the rural ditch at the former Meado Township Church. We are going to wrap up seating and erosion control items yet. Crews are working on improving road in slopes on County Road one thirty-eight, just north of Vernon Center, after recently replacing a centerline culvert, so very steep falling off slopes. They extended the culvert and are putting safer in slopes on. And we're obviously working on routine road grading, mowing, et cetera, and crews are also wrapping up some, replacing guard rail posts on various locations. One of the larger ones was on County State Highway twenty at the Wattenwan River. So if you see them out and about, they're busy with all sorts of projects, keeping things safe and in good condition. So that's all I have, and I'll look forward to seeing you about ten-thirty or eleven o'clock for the road tour.
All righty.
I will have maps available on the bus.
Any questions for Ryan before we let him run off?
Sounds awesome. Thank you.
We're close to done.
Yeah. We're getting there, so.
Call bind and have them here earlier. Okay, I'll do that.
All depends on how long the county attorney keeps us. How long do you want to be kept?
They should be here at ten-thirty in this case, so.
Well, by the time we've done our reports, it'll be ten-thirty, Ryan. Well, we'll be, by the time we've done our reports, it'll be 10:30, Ryan. So if they're scheduled for that, just?
Yeah, that's fine.
Be fine. All right, thank you, Ryan. We'll move on to the county attorney's report.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I know you've got a busy day ahead of you. If you have any specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I just wanted to also report to you that the expungement project that was announced recently, we've already had well over 100 people apply.
Really?
Yeah. So I think five more came in overnight, so we've been triaging those, and we'll continue to work on those as time permits. Otherwise, if you have any specific questions, concerns, or comments?
That's actually exciting to hear. I mean, that is, just makes a lot of sense to do that, and you got some pretty decent press on it, too, so.
Well, let's see, you know, going through some of these things for me was old home week, just like I know that Josh would recognize quite a few of the names.
Sure.
And whatnot, so, but I was just looking at an individual recently that hasn't had anything for 15 years, and it's still on the record, and it's still an impediment to employment and housing, so.
That's, and we need to get that squared away, because we need people to get to work.
All right.
Any questions for Pat?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. All right, move down to administrative.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for October 19th.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Move the bills.
Second.
Got a first and a second to pay the bills. Any questions that weren't already answered? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries to pay the bills.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 10 in your pack, it is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just to have informational items for the board today. We did have a resignation of a medium equipment operator in our Public Works area, and so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. We also had a resignation of a part-time property and environmental resources specialist and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. Another resignation of a part-time library clerk, so we've initiated a recruitment to fill that position. Then we have filled an on-call library clerk position, as well as a licensed center specialist. And we had a promotion of a business analyst in our IT department to a human service supervisor, and we've subsequently initiated recruitment to refill that business analyst position. We also had a promotion of a mechanic to a road supervisor in our maintenance area at Public Works, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that mechanic position. And the last item there is revision of a resignation date of an assistant county attorney. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have about the Human Resources Agenda.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Well, it looks like that's the end of my agenda, except for the committee reports. So we will start with Mark today.
Nine out of 10 times.
Oh.
So we, we understand that. On 19th of October, we did a work session after the board meeting. And October 20th, I took partners for affordable housing, two of our properties. I know most where they all were, but there's a lot of updates, a lot of renovations in some of them, and that was going well. And October 26th, participated with Kip and Kevin on the judicial ditch hearings. And then October 20th, did have a partners for affordable housing board meeting, and discussed fundraises, well, you know, that take place in November. We have one with another SIPs, SIPs and wine thing. I guess I can give everybody information if they want that. And then did have our Association of Minnesota Counties, District 7 meeting at the Golden Bubble and Wells unmarked building on the. But it was worthwhile. It was kind of fun to see a lot of people, you know, we really haven't seen for a while, and at least in one place, so. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Kevin?
As Commissioner Peoples talked about, the work session, District 7 and the drainage. I also attended the Highway 60 Open House in Lake Crystal. Blore County hosted the Lissaw River One Watershed One Plan meeting on the 22nd. Participated in NACO's aid policy committee meetings, as well as some drainage levy meetings. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Vance?
All right, well, I had our work session on the dam right after the last board meeting, and then I had a community farm meeting after that. We had a TDS board meeting, had a, oh, just wait, on the 21st. And then I had a Zoom interview on transportation with WSB, Ron Hartman and Erica Dinsdale. And they, they just were asking me my views on transportation. I imagine I being chair of the AMC Transportation Committee and where it's going in the state of Minnesota. On the 29th, of course, we had our AMC district meeting, and then yesterday I had a law library meeting. And that's the end of my report, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Vance. Colleen?
Things that haven't been mentioned yet, on the 20th, I had a University of Minnesota, the partnership with Germany on renewable energy. I facilitated one of the breakouts, and they talked about volunteer bus drivers in rural. If you have a driver's license, you can transport up to eight people without any additional. So that's how they're working, and they're all volunteers. They work that in rural areas to come into the city centers. Kind of interesting. And, you know, what can we take from that, and how can we learn from some of this stuff? We had like five breakout sessions. On the 21st, I had a wide board meeting where a donor by design gave a presentation on the possibility of an east side Y. It's a long way out. Lots of information has to be looked at, given, and who knows what's going to happen, but the information is starting to come. I had Shack, State Community Health Advisory Committee on the 21st. Minnesota Department of Health has 500 open positions. Long-term care places have 2,300 open positions. So it's, it's scary when you think about it. The legislature did provide an infrastructure fund for the Department of Health. It's $6 million a year. It'll, for this biennium, and hopefully it'll continue beyond that. Eligibility is community health boards and tribes. It's all about innovation and figuring out how to do things in public health. There is a group that will determine that, and they're all with the Department of Health. So we have some commissioners, some public health directors, the Shack chair, a multitude of people. So that's going on there. The 26 side airport commission, Gordini is the distribution center that's coming to Mankato. They're from Lormont. They make gloves and socks, and they'll pay between $17 and $18 an hour.
Starting?
875 jobs were added this year, but manufacturing jobs are down. So that's kind of interesting. There's also probably going to be a need for transit to go to, from MSU to the airport. They're finding that many of their students don't have vehicles, and in the state plan, they want transit between universities and airports. So kind of interesting. Tower's still, you know, in the process, and that's going to take a while. On the 27th, I had Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. They have 55 properties in 34 counties, just a few numbers. There's 1,857 housing units, 878 subsidized units, and they house 4,322 people. So it just shows the need. We had District 7, but then we also had the opportunity to make comment on the GNG letter on redistricting, and we made some good changes to their letter. I had Matty and Prejudice that day. We started that project before COVID, and then COVID hit, and the guy who was running the project with us through the University of Minnesota died. So it's, it's getting started again. It's going to take some time, but they're finding that, I found this really interesting, a cemetery in town only allowed white people to be buried there. So kind of interesting. So they're looking at warranty deeds and torrens, so right now we're using students at MSU, but we plan on expanding it, but it is going to take a few years. And the Diversity Council just hired Mohammed Al-Sadig to be their new executive director. He was part of the police reserve. Probably know him. I didn't go on before.
Nice guy. Great guy.
And works with economic development currently, SBDC. So, and I went to school board meeting last night, and that was interesting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Colleen. I think of the things that were already mentioned, I did attend several SECB board meetings for my statewide emergency communication board, trying to get some things spooled up for the 2020 session, 2020, 20, geez, 2022 session, which is, seems like it's a long ways away, but it's right around the corner. And so they're scrambling to get these language rewrites into them, and we've been getting some help from the legislative person up there, so it's been helpful. We had several things going on. The county ditch stuff has been mentioned, or the joint ditch stuff has been mentioned. Going through all of the levies for all the county ditches the other morning. I think that is very beneficial for us as the board, because it's just a good way to get familiar with them and work through them and try to get them sort of out of the negative. Seems like we get them out, and then we get another one in, so hard to predict the future on those. And then just dealing with some land use issues with a couple of projects we got coming up in the future, and then obviously some drainage issues out in the farm fields as farmers are getting their crops out. So that is my report. So at this time, we would?
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
I will adjourn then.
Second.
Got a first and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Are you done?
Outside at 10:30.
We are done.